The regular meeting of the Putnam County School District for September 21st, 2021 is now in session. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Jane Crawford and our invocation by Mr. Bud McInnes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings given. Thank you for this opportunity to meet together. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a district, shaping the future while nurturing the bonds of our communities. Or come give us the inspiration to be the best we can be.
Yes.
May we be a shining example of your goodness and truth within the Putnam County School District. Now we ask for continued protection of our students, faculty, employees, administration, as well as those attending today. We ask these gifts in your name. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. We have two presentations. Our first presentation is from Florida School Board Association's Tina Pinkerson.
Hi. My name is Tina Pinkerson. I'm the Director of Leadership Services for the Florida School Boards Association. And it's my privilege and pleasure to be here today to present Ms. Holly Pickens her Certified Board Member plaque. To be a Certified Board Member, you have to go through 96 hours of initial training after you've been elected. There are three major forums that you have to attend. One is Finance 1.0, and then the other is one on policy and one on bargaining. Well, Ms. Pickens was not able to go to the one for finance. And I have to tell you that anybody that knows her, she is one persistent woman. And it worked out beautifully because she couldn't be there and she didn't want to wait until we hold the next one because they only happen every two years. And so we actually videoed the last one. And she was my guinea pig to see how it would go attending this forum virtually. And so I have to say thank you for doing that. I know it was a long, boring session for you. But it's wonderful to be here because, I don't know if you, you know, look at the news, but what you see in the news is not good stuff happening to school boards. And what this shows is that the school board members, and you have other school board members up here that are certified, is that they care and that they're willing to put in the time to learn and do professional development, just as we ask our teachers to do. So Ms. Pickens, it is with great pleasure. Come on down.
You go, girl.
And this is your Certified Board Member pin, so when you come back.
I have no idea where mine is.
Well, normally she would have on her orange jacket, but Bud got changed today and he's wearing her jacket.
Congratulations, Holly.
Gator colors.
I hope you will forgive me for not saying that.
It's okay.
On my way to descend to the policies.
Great to see you.
Okay. Good to see you, Tina.
It's always great to be in Putnam County.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Holly.
She means that now.
Thank you, Tina. Our next presentation will be from Ms. Ashley McCool for Department of Student Services and Mental Health Awareness.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Website pulled up. Well, that is definitely not our website. Okay, so this afternoon, um, hi. There's Ms. Welling right there. Come on up, Stephanie. I'm excited, Stephanie. I haven't gotten started yet, so you're good. Come on. Come on up. So Stephanie and I, along with some other folks that work in the mental health wellness team in the district, so through Student Services, Michael Stevens, who oversees our guidance counselors, or school counselors, excuse me, have been working on a way we can better engage with our families in terms of offering support and offering just good information for how we provide support to students for mental health. This also happens to be the month of suicide prevention. And so we wanted to bring that up and just encourage folks to start seeking out information for mental health. And so Stephanie, I'm going to let her share for just a brief moment about what we have decided to do on a monthly basis for our students and families.
Thank you, Ashley. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you, if we could, I just, in, September is Suicide Awareness Month. And all across our nation, our communities, I mean, our cities, we take this time to recognize the importance or bring attention to the importance of a very heavy topic. It is a topic that most folks shy away from, but it is a topic that has so ungraciously affected our communities. Death by suicide is something that's not uncommon. And matter of fact, it is more common that we want to even become aware of. It's a heavy topic. And so with that, I'd like to take a moment of silence just to pay homage to or just this topic, but also those who have lost their lives through death by suicide. Thank you. And so I'd like to give a big kudos shout out to Ashley for supporting us and all of the staff of Putnam County School District who are involved so eagerly and passionately with bringing something that we have envisioned to life. It's materialized. What we have had a challenge with the last four years since I've been involved with the district in this capacity is to bring awareness to the significance of us making mental health something that we talk about, that we talk about, and we talk about so openly and so candidly. We're no longer afraid. And so one of the things that we've done, and again, recognition to all of those individuals who have been a part of this, one of the things that we have done is to bring about our monthly mental health highlights. And so each, because mental health matters, thank you, Ashley. Each month, our goal will be to have a monthly mental health highlight where we're talking about a particular topic. And so I was tasked with the job of coming up with a video and developing a video, a script, if you will, to first of all, address why we should do this. So our mental health awareness highlights, let me put on my glasses. So during our mental health highlight segments, you can count on a few things. Are you going to share the video?
I'm going to share the one of anxiety in a second if you want to give the intro yourself.
Okay, all righty. So during our mental health highlight segments, you can count on a few things. And I'll share, you'll hear a lot of this in the video. First, to learn and increase your knowledge of why having good mental health hygiene practices are important. Secondly, why we should view the need for mental health attention in the same way that we see the need for mental, for medical attention. Okay, if your child is ill, they're ill, whether it's a mental health condition or whether it's a physical illness. We scurry off to take a child to the hospital and seek emergency services so when they have an open gaping wound or they're in a diabetic crisis. But we fail. We fail when a child is suffering emotionally. We fail when they're acting out. We don't see what's behind that acting out behavior. We don't see the pain. And so we write it off. And so that parent who is contacted in that moment when that child is acting up or they're feeling sad or depressed, there's not that sense of urgency. It's not a crisis. It's not a crisis. And so our goal is to bring a lot of emphasis as to why we should recognize that as a mental health issue. We are, in this district, so candid and so passionate about, I know within our department, to bring awareness to this crisis, the crisis of lack of knowledge and information about mental health. We are assuming a posture where we are going to take the mask off, so much is hidden behind the mask. We wear masks every day. But people cover up the pain. And they go to school every day, and many of these kids don't even have behavioral problems. They live with anxiety all day and every day. And they make good grades, and then it's all over. We didn't see a sign. There were no indicators, but there are always signs. Okay, so we will learn during our mental health highlights why we should do, what we should do or not do when we are experiencing our loved one is experiencing an emotional or mental health crisis. And identify as well those individuals or agencies that we can talk to when we notice worsening changes. Our goal again is to take off the mask that mental health hides behind. Reduce the stigma, the shame, the embarrassment that so many individuals who experience because of having a mental health issue or when they're in a crisis, which in turn keeps them, annihilates them, or paralyzes them from seeking help. So that is our plan. Special thanks to everyone. Again, I see my director there, Mr. Randall Headstrom. Randy has been a, he's, we've weathered this storm together. It's been a marriage of DOE and DOH. And sometimes we've fallen out because we just didn't understand each other's language. But we're here now and we're communicating. And so this marriage is looking really good. We're not going to commit adultery.
No divorce.
But this marriage is healthier now.
That's good.
Yeah, that's great. All right. So I would like to share with you, this website can be found at our gallery when you go to putnamschools.org. It is also found under the Student Services Department website. It gives a little overview of the mental health services that are offered here in the district. This, if you go here, you can see helpful documents such as, we'll continue to add flyers and things that are available there. This, we will continue to add to, this is a document that shares some information when we get questions from families. Most importantly, I think defining for families the difference in a, what was formerly a guidance counselor and now called school counselor, what is the service of a school counselor compared to a mental health counselor? Because we do have both, and they are provided to all students, so it explains that. How do you get the process started if you need support for your child or you feel like your child's not getting what they need? We will continue to add information about social-emotional learning. There's an actual curriculum that's used in our elementary schools, and we have activities that are going on in our junior, senior high schools that are very explicit in terms of instruction for social-emotional learning. And as we get more information there, it'll be found at this site. Community resources, this site has, this page has been on our website before. We just are kind of trying to reorganize it in a more user-friendly way. But these are outside community resources for families. And then also here, you will start to see a collection of our monthly videos. And I, the video to the left is where Stephanie just shared kind of what she shared for you guys and intro to what these videos are. And the first topic she covered is anxiety. And we will continue to meet with our school counselors, so it won't always be Stephanie. We're going to enlist the help of other school counselors. We also have some plans to do some really cool videos with our students and some of our theater department students because students love to learn from each other. And so we'll utilize that as well. And we are working out the topics that will be presented throughout the year. So we have some data to show that families won't help with stress at home, discipline, cybersecurity, all kinds of things that come up frequently. So I'll just do, I'm going to start the video. We're not certainly going to watch it all, but we'll give a, I want you guys to see how great Stephanie did.
On today, we will focus on the topic of anxiety. Many feelings and behaviors have been associated with the experience of anxiety and are described as follows. Feeling on edge, uneasy, restless, tense, fear, dread, overwhelmed, sensations such as the butterflies or the jitters. Feeling that you are losing control, drowning, or feeling shaky in your knees, to name a few. Behaviors that you may notice. Uncontrolled worry, difficulty with concentration or even sitting still. Nervous energy that you may notice, such as someone shaking their legs or you even biting your nails. Racing heart, avoiding places, people, or activities. Difficulty sleeping, headaches or stomach aches, panic, or to name a few. Anxiety is common and affects everyone at some point or another. Anxiety becomes unhealthy, though, when it gets in the way of us accomplishing our goals or things that we really want or need to. Anxiety is defined as a mental or physical response to a perceived threat. Notice the emphasis on perceived. Anxiety is not all bad, and it in many ways can help you to avoid danger by alerting you that there is a problem or that danger is near.
So I won't watch, I won't show it all to you, but we are going to push this out via email to all of our families this evening on social media. You can help us share that, anyone that's listening. It makes a big difference when you're on social media if you take an opportunity to share. It reaches so many more families. So we would really appreciate the support for that. And then at the bottom of the page, it's just a list of who our mental health staff are, including our elementary and junior high school counselors because those positions change year to year. So we'll try to keep, we'll do our best to keep that updated in ways you can email those staff members from the site. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that and wanted to make our audience aware of that and those that are watching, and just to recognize each month, we will be pushing that out. And I wanted you guys to know the purpose of it. And we felt like the September Suicide Prevention Month would be a good way to kick this off. So, thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. Do we have any public comment? No? Okay, do we have any, no public hearing? So we'll move to our consent agenda.
Madam Chairwoman.
I've been asked to pull item G1, the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool.
I was going to make a motion that we pull item G1 and accept the consent agenda as presented.
I haven't given everybody a chance.
They might, I just thought you were waiting.
Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Buckles, G1.
That's all.
Ms. Crawford? And Mr. McInnes? G1. Okay, now, Mr. Buckles, make that motion.
I'll make the motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented minus G1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandy Gilliard to accept the consent agenda minus item G1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Mr. Weaver? Can you inform us on item G1?
So I asked for this opportunity so I could go over a brief summary of the Florida Safe School Assessments that we discussed during the executive session earlier today and also provide you the opportunity to discuss and take action. The purpose of the assessments is to comply with the requirements of Florida statute and the MSD Commission recommendations. The goal of the assessments is so that every district will have a safety and security program that's both efficient and effective. As identified in the assessments and were detailed during the executive session over the past year, our school district has coordinated a school community input review and update of our comprehensive school safety and emergency operations plan. We provided support, training, and resources related to school safety and emergency operations. We provided ongoing training for our safe school officers. We've completed internal safety audits at each school. We've completed school safety communications-related projects and completed multiple target hardening and access control projects. The school-level assessments focus on five areas of safety and security. That includes school data, school infrastructure, school security prevention and threat management, and a campus tour. To complete each assessment, school administrators have to assemble a team of stakeholders and subject matter experts, including representatives from both law enforcement and fire to have input. The district-level assessment focuses on six areas of safety and security, including community collaboration, support and prevention, emergency planning, training, security staffing, and physical security. Overall, our plans, policies, procedures, and actions are aligned with statutory requirements and the best practices outlined in the self-assessment tools. However, the assessments have identified focus areas and actions to be taken as funding allows. As discussed in detail during the executive session, these areas include upgrading or adding additional target hardening, territorial reinforcement, and access control measures, adding, improving, or expanding both mechanical and technological strategies, and expanding our safe school officer program. For most of the projects identified, the specific costs are unknown. For example, target hardening, territorial reinforcement, and access control projects, if approved by the board, would all require individual estimates. Although, just for guideline, I mean, we can give you costs for like some of the technological and mechanical projects that we had discussed earlier could range anywhere from about $8,000 to $36,000 per project. All identified efforts within the assessment are extended projects with a timeline for implementation ranging between one and three years. Consideration to projects that will carry over into the district's revitalization efforts may need to be incorporated via new construction efforts as we proceed. So in accordance with provisions outlined in Florida statute, the aforementioned recommendations, strategies, and actions identified in this summary and as previously discussed in the executive session are presented for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept item G1, the District Florida Safe School Assessment Tool.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandy Gilliard to accept item G1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. We have no unfinished business, no new business, so we'll move to the reports by board members, the board attorney, and the superintendent. Mr. McInnes, would you like to go first?
Okay. Um, I did, congratulations, Ms. Pickens.
Thank you.
You got on there really good. Now I'm a bar.
You're not there yet. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Pickens. I did see Ms. Welling's video earlier today, and I think after the first minute and 12 seconds, I had experienced all of what she talked about in the last eight weeks. So it's very informative. I think it'll be great for our community, for parents, students alike, just having that resource available, especially in these times. Thinking about being how we were, when we were locked down too as well, and just a lot of this being in place can satisfy some of the needs for our students and parents too. And I got a chance to go to the Hall of Fame of the Duckies at Crescent City and tag that with the Crescent City versus Interlock High School football game. And I just want to thank all the employees again, dedicated employees, for all that they have done. It just amazes me what Mr. Buckles has said. What is the term about how in place is a parent? What is the word?
In loco spiritus.
That's big time in Putnam County. And I just want to thank all the employees.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Ms. Crawford?
I too wanted to mention the mental health initiative. I think it's wonderful and I enjoyed, I look forward to finish watching the video on anxiety because I have had great anxiety for many years and had no idea what was wrong with me until I was an adult and it was diagnosed. And I think that's probably true of a lot of students in Putnam County. So I really appreciate what y'all are doing. While I'm certainly encouraged by the governor's decision to end FSA testing, I have to tell you, I'm anxiously awaiting to find out what the concrete plan is to monitor student achievement and how they're going to use the progress monitoring as a tool for accountability, because accountability is still going to be very important. You know me, I'm always going to have to mention masks. I read about an organization in Florida that is made up of doctors, and it's called the Committee to Protect Public Health. And they did a, they conducted a survey with a four-point margin of error, and 52%, 52% of the people that took the survey concerning the governor's policy concerning masks is, they feel that it is as unpopular as it is dangerous. And 73% of Florida voters that took part in the survey said that districts should be allowed to implement mask mandates, while 20% oppose it. So you know how I feel, and it is my effort again to ask that we all wear masks. I also want to give a shout out to our bus drivers because, you know, I just, there's a shortage all over the United States. It's not just in Putnam County. It's not just in Florida. And many districts are offering very large signing bonuses. They're probably much larger districts, the larger the district, the larger the bonus, I assume. But, you know, they're doing that in an effort to hire bus drivers. And because they're doing exactly what the bus drivers in Putnam County are having to do. Combine routes, double up, do more than one route. The buses are crowded. They're often late. But these bus drivers are doing everything in their power to get those kids to their assigned schools safely and on time and get them home. And all they hear is complaints, our complaints, excuse me. So I just wish there was a way, we could find a way to reward them for what they're having to deal with, with 30 or more positions that have not been filled. Every day going to work, I pass the bus drivers and I just think, thank you so much for what you do. And this one, oh gosh, what kids won't do when they're challenged? I'm sure you've all heard of the Devious Trick Challenge on TikTok. Well, it's all over the United States, but it's in Putnam County as well. And property has been damaged, is being damaged by this devious lick or... And property has been damaged, is being damaged by this devious lick or trick or whatever challenge it is. And I just feel like if the students are caught, they should have to pay for the damages that are incurred, and they should also be punished for destroying school property. I think parents need to be made aware of this, and, you know, a lot of students do these things because another kid challenges them, but they also think it's a joke, and they think it's funny. But it truly is not when it damages school property.
Anybody's property.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mr. Buckles?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to respond to Stephanie's presentation on mental health. I know we, in a meeting earlier today, I sent some comments about guidance counselors and possibly, you know, at some point in the future, as quick as we can, to try to find a way to maybe certify some more people to help with some of the mental health issues that we have. This pandemic and wearing of masks have brought on across America. Suicide rates have skyrocketed for young people, and even within our employees. We need people at school that can recognize problems. We've had numerous employees over the decades that I've been involved in the schools commit suicide for a variety of reasons, whether the school board overturned a decision that they had made, and...or whatever the reason. It's very sad, and it's very needless, and it's just something that Stephanie needs and Randy need all the help they can get to try to, you know, to try to address the needs. They're out there, kids being abused, whether physically or the worst kind. So it's...it happens, and it's happening, and we have to be more vigilant and understand the signs and try to find out exactly what's occurring. And I'm confident that they will get it worked out to the best of their ability. Also, the...I just look at...Jane mentioned the mask mandates. I still, you know, I understand where she's going with that, and we heard from very passionate parents that felt like everybody should be masked, and then we had very passionate parents that felt the other way. But as far as I know, the information hasn't changed yet, so I'll wait till I see the presentations that come forward, and with that, I don't have anything else at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Ms. Gilliard?
Yes. Mrs. Crawford hit on the fast, that the governor is now proposing Florida assessment of student thinking, and in that...well, the same day that article came out, our school district, our superintendent, had been at some of the schools, and he did also address the topic, and they talked about progress monitoring. And our district is already doing it, has been doing it. They have the data chats where the administrators come in, and they talk about already and where the students are and the things that they're doing. So I feel like we are moving in the right direction, and I'm glad, too, that we're finally gonna not spend three entire days on testing, because going back to...I started to say Sister Wellin, I'm thinking church. Stephanie...Mrs. Stephanie Wellin mentioned anxiety. I've seen it happen where kids literally got sick and threw up on the test. So it is real, and now that this is being looked at by our governor, and we have things already in place, I'm pleased about that. I wanna congratulate Mrs. Tanya Whitehurst and Kristen Carroll. They will be taking a trip. I don't recall where, but they...it's the American Association of School Personnel. They're not just going, you know? Like, sometimes we sign, and our people are going to gain and glean information. They are gonna be presenters.
Oh.
See? You...hey, a lot of times, people judge the book possibly by the cover, but when you dig in there, you find some awesome stuff. So you all...we're proud of you. We're proud, very proud.
It's the first time they've done this, isn't it?
Well, hey, well, you get two thumbs then.
Is it on the new teacher?
It's awesome. It is...it is just to be invited to share with others something that is working. We were teasing when Ms. Pinkerson talked about, "If you looked at school board meetings lately, they're not pretty at all." And to be able to be an example for others to follow, not that we're so great, not that we don't have our differences, but we realize ultimately, in the end, it ain't about us, it's about our children, our employees, and making sure we do the very best we can for them. And so you all are doing a heck of a job as well. To Toby Weaver, Mr. Weaver, Florida Safe School Assessment, he knew his stuff. That lets me know that he's honestly going through the data, and he's not just rubber-stamping it each year. He's going through, looking at it. He knows where the no may have come from, and he knows how to fix it, and we appreciate that, because the kids can't learn if they're hungry and scared to death and anxious. And then, again, to the mental health, thank you all so much for everything you do. We don't say it enough, but we appreciate you. Our bus drivers, yes, Jane, we appreciate every one of them for everything that's done in this district. And as soon as COVID allows us, we are going to get back to the 2020, recognizing those people that have given 20 years of service to our children, but we wanna do it safely. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard.
I'm sorry I neglected to congratulate you on your award.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
You applaud it.
I applauded, but I should've said something.
Well, I...she was nice when she said I was persistent, because I really...I just really wanted to do that, you know? You put a challenge before me, and I'm gonna go. So a couple of things, I would just like to thank the Palaca Daily News and for the article on Trish Salz and her program at Crescent City High School Allied Health. She has done an amazing job, and she has put so many of our students are in the medical profession, or when they graduated, at least they were ready to go to work. She's had certified CNAs, CMAs, nurses, pharmacists, veterinarians, and doctors. And one so-mentioned student, Rashawn Mims, started work today...yesterday, his first day as a doctor. So he also comes back and participates in the alumni band whenever he can, too, at Crescent City. Keeping up with the theme of the bus drivers, I noticed on Ms. Whitehurst, on the personnel, Mr. Hardy is gonna not drive our buses anymore, Mr. Noah Hardy. And I'm just gonna tell you, I rode on probably 50,000 miles of buses in my career, and drivers that were so dedicated, and Mr. Hardy was one of those drivers. He took us to Frostproof, and the game started at 6:00, and it went five games, so we probably didn't leave Frostproof until around 8:00, 8:30, driving through Orlando. And oftentimes, I never really could sleep on the bus, because, you know, I felt like I needed to be awake to help the driver. But with Mr. Hardy, you just...I just kinda went on to sleep. He was just a great driver and will definitely be missed in the South End. I'd like to thank Mr. McGinnis for coming to the Hall of Fame. I saw him and then didn't get an opportunity to go and talk to him. That was a really great night, and I think Yolanda Brady and Kasia Brady, who are not related at all, they played very similar to one another, but I think they were genuinely touched, and I know they were really pleased to have their jerseys retired. And the final four girls, nine of 14 came. One had passed away, and her mother was there, so really 10 of 14. And they...it was just great. It was fun. We relived a lot of really great moments as a group. And I would also like to thank Travis Weaver for that complete, very complete work for our safe school assessment. He definitely puts in a lot of time, and you can tell that he's up on all the current technology and everything to help our district and make our parents feel like their students are safe and our students safe. And I think that's all I have. So we'll go to our board attorney, Mr. Taylor.
I don't have anything to add this week.
Thank you. And Dr. Searcy.
Yeah, just wanna echo the congratulations to Holly, and what an honor, and...whoa.
That's Jane. She does it from time to time.
It's really good to see, especially our board chairman, to achieve that, so thank you for all your time you put into that. Goodness to Travis as well. He works very hard. He actually...he and I met last week and looked over his presentation, and it's just the amount of work that he intends to do is just phenomenal. And that's a new reality we're in now, ever since Parkland. It has really changed his everything he does, so a lot of stuff to keep track of. I do wanna mention, and this was in the PDM, but we did, or we will be, first part of October, gonna be providing a retention payment for all of our employees who did not receive the bonus from the governor back in summertime. You know, the governor gave a $1,000 bonus to principals and teachers, and our staff felt it was very important that we honor all the employees who were here last year and who are still with us now, and about 800 and something employees, I believe, that non-instructional, everybody, bus drivers, anybody who did not receive a check, received a $1,000 retention payment.
That's wonderful. Thank you all for doing that.
So we just wanted to show our appreciation, and I know you would echo that as well. And to go along with that, if you saw the little video we did last week, we also found out, and through our insurance committee, that our health insurance rates will be held again at no increase for the third straight year.
That's awesome.
So again, we're also saving them money through health insurance. And as you know, y'all passed last meeting, the whole thing about doing the health insurance savings account. So I feel real good about where we're going with that, and I just wanna congratulate our employees, because they make that happen, you know, by staying healthy and, you know, making wise decisions on, you know, using their insurance. As you know, the school grades came out yesterday, and we opted out as a district, and this was actually, the entire state of Florida had the option to opt out, school grades and district grades, okay? Based on what happened last year. We still received scores, okay? But we did not have to. The governor and the Department of Education allowed us to opt out. So we didn't feel it was justified in taking a school grade based on all the, you know, the interruption in instruction last year, that type of thing. But again, we're looking at the data and seeing how we can, you know, use that to drive our instruction this year. But I just wanna make sure you knew that we did not opt in to have a grade. Now, we did have one school, QI Roberts, that did opt in, and I believe the Trill's Reading Center opted in as well. But we will definitely continue on. As a matter of fact, today, we held our data chats with our secondary principals, and I believe tomorrow with our elementary principals, looking at the data, you know, what are we gonna do for this year to continue to improve? Finally, so one of y'all mentioned the governor's recommendation as far as the progress monitoring, replacing the FSA, and I think that's been well-received. We are definitely looking at the fine print.
Yeah.
And we just gotta get through the legislature, but, you know, obviously, there's gonna be accountability, but we're just looking at the fine print and see what it looks like. I'm sure there'll be school grades and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction. I think anything that will save time for instruction and learning, you know, I think we're all for that.
Yes.
And just taking all this time away for one test, I think is counterproductive, so we look forward to that. I will be getting an update. I'm actually leaving here to go into the Superintendent's Association meeting of all the superintendents of Florida, and the commissioner will be there, and I'm sure we'll get an update, a little more specifics about that. So I'll update you as I receive information. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone have anything else? This meeting's adjourned.